Good evening. Calling to order, meeting of Monday, January 11th, 2021. We'll all rise and salute the flag.
Yes, very good afternoon. It's 11:00 AM.
Congratulations, Agents 35, United States of America.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the public conscience stands in the nation. The United States of America is a free and honest democracy.
All council members, Counselor Genino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Gu拉斯o.
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna.
Yeah.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Yeah.
Here, Counselor Novoselski. Here, Counselor Powers.
Yeah.
Here, Counselor Rotundo.
President.
Here, Counselor Serena.
Here.
Here, Counselor Visconti.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Keith.
Here.
Here, Coram is present. Calendar item number two, election of the City Council President for calendar year 2021.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise to the occasion to ask the Revere City Council vote election of a City Council President for calendar year 2021. Please ask for a roll call.
Counselor Genino.
Does any councils have a nomination?
When your name is called as a City Councilor, please indicate the person you're selecting for Council President.
Counselor Genino.
Counselor Anthony T. Zambudo.
Counselor Genino voting for Counselor Zambudo. Counselor Gu拉斯o.
Anthony Zambudo.
Counselor Gu拉斯o voting for Counselor Zambudo. Counselor McKenna.
Anthony Zambudo.
Counselor McKenna voting for Counselor Zambudo. Counselor Morabito.
Counselor Zambudo.
Counselor Morabito voting for Counselor Zambudo. Counselor Novoselski.
Anthony Zambudo.
Counselor Novoselski voting for Counselor Zambudo. Counselor Powers.
Counselor Zambudo.
Counselor Powers voting for Counselor Zambudo. Counselor Rotundo.
Counselor Anthony Zambudo.
Counselor Rotundo voting for Counselor Zambudo. Counselor Serena.
Counselor Anthony T. Zambudo.
Counselor Serena voting for Counselor Zambudo. Counselor Visconti.
Counselor Anthony T. Zambudo.
Counselor Visconti voting for Counselor Zambudo. Counselor Zambudo.
Counselor Anthony T. Zambudo.
Counselor Zambudo voting for himself and Council President Keith.
Counselor Zambudo.
Council President Keith voting for Counselor Zambudo. Counselor Zambudo is the new City Council President for 2021.
What do we all stand up for?
Dotting on the Zoom.
No, it's yours as well. You have to turn your volume up, please.
Yours as well, okay?
Well, look at mute.
Quick.
It's on mute.
Quick to criticize.
Counselor Zambudo, please raise your right hand and repeat after me, using your own name after I say "I." I.
I, Anthony T. Zambudo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As President of the Revere City Council.
As President of the Revere City Council.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth.
Of the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Counselor.
Thank you. Jerry.
Great.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there something, someone's phone on? Is the volume on someone's laptop that's closing the app over? Calendar item two is the election of the City Council Vice President for calendar year 2021.
Mr. President. Mr. President. At this time, I would like the Revere City Council to elect a Vice President for the year 2021. When the Councilor's name is called, please state your indication as to who you would select as Vice President. Thank you.
For the election of the City Council Vice Presidency, Counselor Genino. There's an issue with the speakers.
I have a problem with the speaker.
If it gives us for a quick delay here.
Can you ask? Restarting the roll call for City Council Vice President, Counselor Genino.
Counselor Jerry Visconti.
Counselor Genino voting for Visconti. Counselor Gu拉斯o.
Counselor Jerry Visconti.
Counselor Gu拉斯o voting for Visconti. Counselor Keith.
Counselor Jerry Visconti.
Counselor Keith voting for Counselor Visconti. Counselor McKenna.
Counselor Jerry Visconti.
Counselor McKenna voting for Counselor Visconti. Counselor Morabito.
But Jerry Visconti.
Counselor Morabito voting for Counselor Visconti. Counselor Novoselski.
Counselor Jerry Visconti.
Counselor Novoselski voting for Counselor Visconti. Counselor Powers.
Counselor Visconti.
Counselor Powers voting for Counselor Visconti. Counselor Rotundo.
Counselor Visconti.
Counselor Rotundo voting for Counselor Visconti. Counselor Serena.
Counselor Gerardo Visconti.
Counselor Serena voting for Counselor Visconti. Counselor Visconti.
Counselor Visconti.
Counselor Visconti voting for himself and Council President Zambudo.
Counselor Jerry Visconti.
Council President Zambudo voting for Counselor Visconti. The new City Council Vice President for 2021 is Jerry Visconti. Jerry, will you please respond a little?
Yes.
Just step back a little bit so I can be up here. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me, using your own name after I say "I." I.
I. Jerry Visconti.
Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully and impartially. Discharge and perform. All the duties incumbent upon. Vice President of the Revere City Council. According to the best of my abilities and understanding. Agreeably to the rules and regulations. The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth. So it sounds like we have the volume fixed, but someone was playing with the actual volume coming out of the speaker. That's what the issue was. You're all set now.
Mr. President.
Counsel Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that we were finishing up, and congratulations on your newly appointed presidency.
Thank you, sir.
If I could take a moment of personal privilege.
Go right ahead.
To have a brief statement.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. To the residents of Revere and my fellow City Council members and friends, I wanted to thank you again for allowing me to serve as the President for the City Council. This past year will be one that we all soon hope to forget. And like the entire world, the residents of Revere have faced much adversity and struggle. It's easy to want to move on. However, with life and all that its ups and downs bring us, I would be remiss if I couldn't reflect on some of the positives of the year. Our city government has been behind its residents from day one, lockstep on recovery, treatment, support, and general kindness. Neighbors from all walks of life have chipped in and helped. I've never witnessed such a collaborative effort to serve the residents of Revere, and for that, I am truly grateful. Fortunately, I will not be going very far, and I'm just going to be seated three seats away from you, Counselor Zambudo. But from the bottom of my heart, it has truly been an honor to serve the residents of Revere and my fellow colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, former President Keith. You did a wonderful job. We're all proud of you, and it was certainly under unbelievable circumstances. I hope to do as well in my year. Thank you. I just want to take a minute to, I'm humbled by the support of my colleagues. I'm fortunate to have a great group of professionals to work with. I am truly honored to be their leader this year, and I know that we are going to do great things in partnership with the administration, with a lot of great communication between the administration and the City Council. So I'm looking forward to a very productive year for the citizens, and I'm also looking forward to the end of this COVID stuff. So thank you very much again. Again, I'm humbled by the support and the trust, and I will not let you down. Thank you. Counsel Vice President Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank my colleagues as well for their support in electing me as Vice President. I would also like to congratulate Counselor Zambudo as our newly elected president, and look forward to working with him, as well as my colleagues on the council, as well as the administration in what I expect to be another challenging year in our city. So I want to thank everyone. I am humbled by this, and I will work very diligently and hard with this council group to move this city forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Adam Clerk.
Calendar item number five, I'm sorry. Calendar item number four, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of December 14th, 2020. Calendar item number five, veto message from the mayor regarding the petition of Squire Road Realty LLC to amend the zoning map of the city of Revere as follows. Section 1, Title 17 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere and the Zoning Map, provided by Section 1712020 of said title, is hereby amended to change the zoning district designation of property known and numbered as Lot A at 398 Squire Road from the residential B District to the general business district.
So at this time, I'm going to call on my good friend and colleague from Ward 6 to give his version of why we're about to override this veto, and then I'll give my two cents on it after him. Counselor Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. So. Thank you, Mr. President. Am I unmuted now? Okay. So right before Christmas, we took this matter up. This was 398 Squire Road at the corner of Stevens Street, and they are looking to bring that plot of land, that parcel into uniform zoning to make it all general business versus general business and a sliver which is not general business. So when we had initially passed this, I'm not an attorney, and I wanted to make sure that Stevens Street was protected because I did not want, in the future, the residential home that's there to be torn down and some sort of business or apartments or what have you be placed on that strip. Subsequently, after we passed this, the city solicitor took a look at it, and when I was led to believe that it was a permanent solution and it would be zoned general business in perpetuity, I was, I shouldn't say I was misled, but the city solicitor did disagree that he found a statute that covenants for zoning are only good for 20 years. So I, I'm sorry, 30 years, not 20 years, 30 years. So I had asked the mayor, right after the city solicitor determined that, where it was the holidays and we didn't have any meetings, within a few days, I asked the mayor to veto this to buy us time, to send it back to the council so that we could work on a resolution. Since the holidays, we have come up with a resolution. There is a provision in the general laws that allow a zoning change to be, or a covenant for a zoning change to be valid for 20 years in addition to that 30 years. So that will bring this covenant to be in effect for 50 years. Now, I don't know, I will, I'll still be here in 50 years, I hope. Hopefully, I'm living in the Point of Pines on the beach by then. I'll be in my 80s and retired, but I think in 50 years, a lot can happen in the city, and I am okay with making sure, I'm okay with the 50-year provision. I just did not, I was not comfortable with the 30 years. So, long story short, this does protect Stevens Street for a couple of generations, for 50 years, and in 50 years, you know, who knows where we will be as a city? And hopefully, you know, it will all work out in that time. But for now and for, you know, for the next 50 years, it will be okay. So I do hope that we vote to override this veto, but it is not an override as a chastisement of the mayor or an administration. This is simply a procedural thing, and I thank the mayor for vetoing it to buy us time to determine a reasonable resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. If I might, I want to thank the mayor for cooperating with the City Council. This was, this was to delay this from taking effect, and there's, you know, there's a 10-day window that you have to either approve or veto something, and the mayor worked in cooperation with the City Council. We're very grateful for it. And as my colleague, Counsel Serena, said, we are certainly grateful and not in any way chastising the mayor. I just want to make that very clear. So I think at this, at this time, if no other councils want to speak on this, we can go ahead with a roll call to override the veto. Adam Clerk. Adam Clerk, for a point of clarity, a yes vote is to override the mayor's veto?
Yes, a yes vote overrides the mayor's veto, and no vote sustains the mayor's veto.
Oh, thank you very much for clarity.
Shall the City Council pass this ordinance over the mayor's objections? Counselor Genino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gu拉斯o.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Counselor Rotundo voting yes. Counselor Serena?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been passed.
And I just want to say, I apologize to Attorney Simeoni, who is now, I see, on my Zoom screen, but wasn't there. I was going to call on him to clarify how we cleared this up, but I guess if you'd like to say something, Counselor Simeoni, you can go right ahead, Attorney.
President, I don't think anything needs to be added. I think the board councilman eloquently set forth the parameters of why this action was required. We understood the action was going to be done for that sole purpose. I think he's accomplished his goal, and we have accomplished our goal, which is to get it passed and also protect that neighborhood. We thank Counselor Serena for his cooperation, and the mayor, and this honorable body as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Adam Clerk.
Calendar item number six, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of McCourt Construction Company as a licensed drainlayer.
Appointment's?
Calendar item number seven, motion presented by Counselor Serena that the mayor instruct the Parks and Recreation Department to not turn on the lights at the fields at St. Mary's in the evenings from November 30th through March 1st unless there was a baseball or softball game or some sort of city sanctioned event. These lights are often, these lights are left on some evenings when fields are unused, and therefore, electricity is being wasted.
Counselor Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I had initially filed this motion right after our last meeting in December because a resident had called me a few times, and he'd mentioned he lives in Ward 6, and, you know, when the kids aren't playing baseball, a lot of times those lights are on in the evenings, and as a taxpayer, he was concerned that we are wasting electricity. However, I have to be honest. Since I filed this motion with the clerk, there have been a couple of issues down at the ballfields where I had to contact the police department. So I understand that having the lights on could be a public safety issue. I see that Mike Hanahosa is on the call, and maybe he can address that. But basically, I was wondering maybe if I could even amend the motion or based on Mike's feedback. I wonder if there's any way to either dim the lights or have some of the lights versus all of the lights on versus, you know, having all those bright LEDs on all the time. So, Mr. President, if through you, if you wouldn't mind yielding the floor to Mike Hanahosa, Director Hanahosa, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, Mr. Director.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see all of you again. So just as far as St. Mary's goes, we have had some, it's really a public safety issue. This was, this was a motion asked for by past counselor, Patch, back in November of 2016, that we actually keep the lights on. So since November of 2016, we have kept lights on even when there aren't any baseball games or softball games being played down there. We currently keep the lights on until 8 o'clock every night. We do not put on all three fields. I rotate the fields one at a time. So it's not lit up like it normally is, but it still provides that public safety for people that are, that would like to walk and stuff like that. The field and the whole park was designed with a walking feature to it, so that's what all the paths are for. So we thought it'd just be a good idea that the lights were, you know, kept on. We're not trying to keep them on until 10 o'clock. I mean, I think 8 o'clock is a reasonable number, you know, for us to have, but there have been more and more sightings of coyotes down there. So I think the, the lights kind of keep them away, you know. I think after 8 o'clock, and, you know, if you're walking that late, it's, but we just thought about, if you come home at 5 o'clock or 6 o'clock from work, that you might still want to walk your dog. You know, as far as electricity is concerned, the cost to, to run the lights gets less and less as the daylight. We turn them on at sunset, and we shut them off at 8 o'clock. So right now, they're currently running for about four hours, a little less than four hours. And as we move through January and February, as that sunset gets further, you know, it only ends up being about three hours. So the cost to run the lights for a four-hour, for a four-hour night for one field is about $19.20. It's about 40 cents an hour per fixture. We run 12 fixtures. So I hope that, I hope that explains it, but.
That's, that does, Mr. Director.
That's, that's great information, Mr. Director. Appreciate that. And so what's, what's the will of my colleague?
I would say, Mr. President, you can place it on file. Now we do have an explanation. And to be honest, since, since I filed that motion last month, like I said, there have been a couple of issues, and I think the public safety factor does outweigh the cost. So thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Director.
Thank you, guys. Hope all is well. We'll see you soon.
Great, thanks, Mike.
See you soon, Mike.
Okay, so we'll place that on file.
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Counselor Gu拉斯o that the City Council award a certificate of merit honoring Speaker of the House, Robert A. DeLeo, for his many years of dedicated public service to the residents of Revere and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Counselor Gu拉斯o.
Mr. President, it's with the greatest of honor that I make this motion. He not only is a great public servant, he's a great friend. He's a great friend to many of us. And for an individual to serve 30 years in the House of Representatives in representing our great city in the fashion that he has done, he's treated Revere as if he lived here. And that is an unbelievable statement to make. He spends a lot of time in Revere. He was dedicated to Revere. He had his place of business in Revere. He really did an unbelievable representation for our people, our city. And furthermore, to advance to be Speaker for 12 years, Mr. President, to serve not only the people of our district, but to serve the whole Commonwealth, and we, as a neighboring city, as a representative in his area, what better could you ask for? Having, and it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We probably never see that again until Jessica Genino takes over the speakership. But we were so blessed to have such an individual and is due a policy to us as he invited each and every one of us to his annual meeting and gathering in the State House, and he offered these luxurious luncheons. I remember the first days of his office. It was a little cubby hole downstairs, and we had to keep our jackets and coats on because it was so cold. And he offered out these little bit of sandwiches that, he said, "Mr., Mr. Representative, is this what we get?" But low and behold, did we see this individual rise to the ranks as chairways and means. And then we saw what was taking place and the type of power that was coming along with him. And the way he distributed that authority was so genuine. He was just tremendous. He never looked at himself as a powerful individual. He just carried out the responsibility of the position and did it with first-class authority. So I offered this motion out. I know my colleagues want to join in with me on this because this is an opportunity to recognize an individual who served our community well, and he's very much deserving of this merit of honoring him. Nothing else we could say but the wonderful things that we're about to bestow upon him and just a little token of appreciation of what we think of him. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Gu拉斯o. And before I call on my colleagues, I would ask that, if you wouldn't mind, we'd make this as part of the whole City Council, City Council as a whole.
That's what I referenced when I was speaking.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselors? Ash, I don't see the hands here. I guess I don't, I don't have it on.
There's no counselors have their hands raised.
No counselors have their hands raised? Okay, I'll, in that case, I'll take a second to say a couple of words about our dear friend, Speaker Robert DeLeo. I think, Arthur may have known him a little longer than me. However, I did work on the speaker's first campaign. I know. And, and we all shared an office there on Squire Road many years ago, so many I don't want to mention how long ago. However, I often blame the speaker for the fact that I'm in politics because in his first campaign, I was knocking on doors in Revere with Needle Dinsky, God rest his soul. We're out in the pouring rain. I remember it like it was yesterday. And I'd knock on the door and I'd say, "Hi, I'm Tony Zambudo. Please consider voting for my dear friend, Bob DeLeo. He'll make a great state representative." And after about 100 households, I kind of got that bug to do it for myself. So every time things get a little tough in politics, I would go back to the speaker and say, "If it wasn't for you, I wouldn't be in this stupid business." But we love him, and he was, you know, it's almost like the Patriots. We had nine Super Bowls, and we're spoiled, six Super Bowls, they went to nine, whatever. But we had all that, and we're spoiled rotten. We're spoiled rotten having the speaker represent us for all these years. And don't kid anybody, we got an awful lot done because of him being in that position, and we'll never forget it. So I'm looking forward to being with the speaker again. So I thank you so much for putting this motion in, Councilor Guanasso. Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Councilor Morabito that the mayor be requested to direct the appropriate department to replenish the rock surface at the Paws and Play Dog Park.
Councilor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. A little contention between you and my other colleague, who's been on the council longer, who's a better friend to Speaker DeLeo. My God, it never stops between you two, huh?
You seem to be the only one who thinks that. We didn't have any contentious, we were offering praise.
It's what we say behind it back afterwards. No, I'm just kidding. No, first, let me congratulate you, Mr. President, and congratulate Vice President Visconti on your achievement tonight as president and vice president. I just want to, my motion is very clear and direct. A couple constituents came to me about, to discuss the Paws and Play Dog Park on Sergeant Street. It's a great park, you know, great place to take a dog for activities, get their exercise out, but over the years, it's been weatherized and rocks have disintegrated. So I would hope, after the mayor sees this motion, and I hope I have the support of my colleagues to pass this, that he will replenish the rock surface at the park at some time, hopefully like around the spring after the winter.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councillors want to speak on this motion? I might take a minute to say I think it's a great motion, and I've been here so long that I remember when we were trying to get the land for that dog park from the state. So it's amazing that the time has flown by, and we need new stones there. So great for noticing it, great for putting this in, and thank you. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Just a couple late motions that were submitted. Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo that the mayor request inspectional services or whichever department he deems appropriate to investigate the Verizon store property for rat burrows and have them baited to prevent rats from going into residential properties.
Councilor Rotundo.
I speak for itself.
Thank you very much. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Councilor Guanasso that the mayor request inspectional services to notify the new owners of the former Sozio's property, of the Sozio's property to bait for rats.
Councilor Guanasso.
Mr. President, there's a lot of burrows in and about the Verizon and the old Sozio site, and area residents at the condos, at the Condom Association, reporting to several residents that they're there, they're inundating the neighborhood, and the least the property owners can do is to feed up these burrows, close them up, and put the necessary ingredients inside to rid the area of these rodents. I guess they're quite large, and they're concerned, and I am concerned also because I represent that area, and I want to make sure that the safety and health of the residents who live there are taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilor Guanasso. Any other councillors? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. No further business. The City Council will stand adjourned until January 25. Thank you all for your attendance.